You know, nobody comes in there. We did have pit bulls in there and we made sure that Carmen's name was not good to this man. So he got him out of there in a week. So I appreciate the time that you're giving me. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tiffany Fisher. Hi. I just want to say thank you so, so much because we have talked about the streets in front of, like Superior Elementary School last school year. We're in a new school year now and I'm glad to see that there is something being done. Nothing happens overnight, so I know there was a process and I thank you very much on behalf of the whole district. I would also, gee, this, I would, I would like to say, I mean, I have to say, I love East Cleveland too. We're all, majority of us are from East Cleveland, like you all said, and it's very important to keep what it's ours, just like it didn't happen overnight to get that street fixed. It won't happen overnight to get the city fixed, but it is coming. There's plans already here and they're still looking and they're still trying to buy and invest in this city. Alls we have to do is take care of it when we get it. The school year begins on the 27th next week, so please watch our children because there are still some abandoned houses around here and there are some people that should not be in our city because they are not one of us. Please watch our children. They will be in school. I'm sorry. The back to school rally is on the 29th in the morning at Shaw High School and I'm gonna leave the rest because I know Dr. LaHobie is gonna fill you in and a lot of other stuff. But thank you all very much for paying attention to our children.
Let's see how schools start with?
On the 27th. Yes. And there are a lot of new programs there, so just like our city will be growing, our school system is growing too. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Thank you, City Council, for working on repairing our, our streets. As Ms. Fisher said, that's really important. She mentioned back to school rally. I'd like to say that this year, the Battle of the Bands is coming back to East Cleveland and will be at the Shaw Stadium on September 19th. I believe the starting time is 6:00 PM, but we have time to figure out the, the exact time of that. Of course, you're all welcome to the school board meetings. The regular meeting is always the second Monday of the month at seven o'clock at Shaw. Special meetings are scheduled as needed. And I'd like to add to Erwin Anderson's wonderful statement about Julian Bond. I'd like us to remember also that he is the founding director of the Southern Poverty Law Center, which does outstanding work for us all. And I first became aware of him when he was at the Democratic Convention in Chicago back in the 60s. He dates us, but anyway, thank you very much.
He said that kind of look.
Well, you know, some of us are getting up there.
My name is Barclay Davis Jr. I am President of Shaw View. I've been here before about Shaw and I'm gonna keep coming, keep coming about Shaw. I've been here fifty-some years and I think St. Clair been done maybe four times. Mayfield been done five, six times. Shaw ain't never been done. You talking about the Battle of the Bands? Better hope when they marched down to P. D. O. F. Now, there's three councilmen here. He's at Ward Four. Y'all two are at large. So y'all, three of y'all, should get together and try to work on Shaw. Well, you got to show me. I mean, you know, I've been knowing all of y'all, but, but I ain't no joke. I'm serious about it. Go down that street again, they pass it and the water's coming right back out. There's water under there. I keep telling y'all, the bridge where the track come across is falling apart. Right there where that cone is, there's a hole down there. You can see, I don't know how far it's going down. Y'all keep thinking, I'm keep coming, but y'all three, y'all at large, y'all should hear.
Yeah. Charles Home, 1208 Terrace Road. You know, I was talking to Mr. Martin and he was telling me that he was studying the Ohio Vice Code. And I think, and I hope that all of you are was learning more about the operation of a city or any business, because this is the problem that we are having. I hear a lot of people's talking, good talk and whatever. I was told about three or four months ago, I said, "Mr. Martin, why don't you run for council?" I said, "Well, maybe I would." I said, "But the first thing I would have to try to implement is raising the tax because the money is not there." Would you vote for me? Hell, no. I mean, I just be frank, the city's money is in bad shape. The fire department, the structure, everything is falling apart. Everybody talking about we want to keep this city. I'm on the pole. I mean, I'm in the middle. What we have, do people realize that if you have a house and the fire department doesn't have a proper operating pump, they try to put the fire out just not to get it so extensively, the fire department cannot do their job. The insurance companies, they look at this, "Well, the people's living here, why would I insure you when the liabilities want to be way outweighed what we're gonna get from you?" I mean, these are things that y'all should think about when y'all tell me. I wouldn't mind, East Cleveland was here when I was born, it'll be here when I'm gone. But if y'all can't properly maintain, if we can't maintain and we can't get the proper management of this city, then we, some need to change. If we have to change the administration or the councilman, whoever, if y'all want to keep it, because y'all been there, here, and we steady going down, not up, down. When you go to the doctor, if you're sick, if, you got an ear, you want them to stop at a status quo and hopefully they can rise and up. But if you get another doctor and you keep going down, what good is changing the doctor? You know, these things that I, this is the way I look at life, and we doing worse and always going worse and never doing better. And like I said, and like I heard, somebody who was on the fisky mud, I don't know how long, after a few years, we got right back in it. And my thinking is, somebody said, "Well, we meeting our payroll." But the few assets that the city has, you getting rid of them to try to save and make sure that you can keep the payroll. Once the payroll guys, he ain't wearing no control over the money. And that's what he interested in. That's all, nothing else.
Four more people. The clerk said he is, we only got three standing up, so you, you, okay, so that's the four. We got four that went to speed.
My name is Marilyn Sharpley. Two things I want to speak on. I live on North Taylor and as you know, the street was paved last year, so all the residents on my street are real happy about that. And we're doing what we can to keep the street looking nice. I mean, we, we got this new paved street, so, but what happens is, there's a couple houses where people don't take care of things and trash sits out there and they're doing things that are against the ordinance, like putting the trash cans at noon the day before to pick up when it's not supposed to be out there till six, because I know, you know, that part of the ordinance. There are a lot of things in East Cleveland that are in the ordinance that simply are not enforced. I don't know if that's because you don't have the manpower to do it, but these are the kinds of things that if the city was annexed, annexed to the city of Cleveland, maybe we could have some help on some of those issues. Now, I applaud the council for the things that they are doing, but as you well know, there's a lot of things that still need to be done. I, as a resident here and my neighbors, we do what we can to keep the property and the street looking nice. The other request is that the person who owns that building where H&R Block is, there's dumpsters in the back and those dumpsters are not always empty like they should. Trash is all around the dumpsters and soon you turn down my new paved street, you see this eyesore. So is there a way that maybe the owner could at least enclose those dumpsters? It would help. If that could do that, at least have that trash picked up on a regular basis. I appreciate it.
My name is Juanita Galleen, Ward Two. I'm also running for East Cleveland Council seat. And I'm also concerned about Forest Hill. Coming down Forest Hill, water is like flooding from Forest Hill on Euclid. They, they digging up holes and leaving. Anybody can get hurt. If you go down here, close to Superior Hill, you're gonna see water coming down. And something need to be done in the back of Forest Hill, how they tore up across the street from Hero Hospital, how they tore up that building. That is ridiculous. It, don't nobody see it. Our streets in our community is getting damaged, uh, people don't have a vision, because the homeowners, the last I, I heard that they were gonna, you know, fix it up for some school people to come in. All of a sudden, you turn around and it's not like that now. It is damaged for our elderly that stay on their strip and it's ridiculous the way it looks. And we need some help. If you want to help, like this man came out of nowhere, this pastor came out of nowhere. Y'all been in the seats long enough, okay? We need some help. He's stepping up, you should be able to step up. And it's time for help for East Cleveland. And I hope somebody do something about the water, do something about the holes in the ground where they dug it up and just left it hanging. You know, these are workers that's just leaving it desolate. And we better than that.
Terry A. Toofey, 145 11, Terrace Road. This shirt is the 137 shots where the, the Cleveland police came in and disrespected the city and disrespected the citizens. If you talking about not wanting to join the city, I don't care if it is my hometown, my favorite hometown to pick it, I don't have nothing to do with those police. They're dangerous. University Circle wants us ends out the way. I understand that. Black folks have always been told to get out the way. But the reason I took my stand was I knew a little bit about history, black folks in the system. I'm not willing to, as I told a former councilman in, the other day, who's from, former councilman Cle, East Cleveland, Ohio, and he saw a man who was an East Clevelander fixing my steps. I see houses, I just shake my head. You got a house here, somebody's trying, doing their best to fix it up, put flowers and to keep that house going, and then the next house right next to them is boarded up or, or Rosemont. I bet you it's three, four, five houses that are boarded up. There are people who are struggling to keep their houses up and to keep their property up. They're not rich, but they're, but they're not willing to, as I told the former councilman, they're not willing to, willing to roll over and play dead. And I'm not willing to roll over and play dead for racist white supremacy.
When does it start? Okay, started here. As I said before, I don't have to lie. Here's a letter from Attorney General DeWine stating his some questionable, and here's the one from the Board of Elections, Pat O'Donnell and others are coming, and I've spoken to others. Now, have said that, I told Pat O'Donnell, you opening up a can of orange. Your job is more than just certifying the petitions, the names on the petition. All petitions are uniformated by the State of Ohio. When we were not in conform, we said we were conform to the, the, uh, State of Ohio petitions. That's all petition. And it must have this language on here. Then when you accept something that is short of that, I don't care whether the law director put it in place, it's wrong. I don't care whether Gary Norton, mayor, put it in place, it's wrong. Smetly or Hettly or whomever, it is wrong. And I pointed it out to this, the, the law director. He said, I mean, not the law director, well, I did say it out there when she was out there, but I don't care who wrote it, it's wrong. And I told Pat, I mean, O'Donnell that if you accept this, besides looking at the signatures and saying some of those are, are good and some is not, then you have opened up a can of orange, anybody can put anything together and go down there and say, because they're saying you have history of accepting petitions that is lacking in the, the oath of office and the de, uh, uh, the, uh, uh, the, uh, this, I'm, I put it, uh, detail or whatever it's called, that is where the fifth degree felt. And that is what's hanging over the heads and also, let me share this with you. The, the Attorney General, United States Attorney General, Loretta Lynch, has also been advised of this. So they are looking at it and Pat O'Donnell said he will have to revisit this. And you're supposed to have someone here today from the Board of Elections. Now, I don't know whether they are here or not to, to see just what happened and what you do in reference to your responsibility as the legislative branch of this government. And you did your due diligence tonight and I'm proud of you and, uh, uh, doing what you're supposed to do.
Wait, wait, that, that's my bad here. You said that again. I did hear you. No more time.
I said you did your due diligence tonight. You did well. You stood up and did your job as elected official, as a councilman.
That's what I'm like.
That's your job and I'm proud of you.
Thank you.
That's just what you're supposed to do and I'm sure the Board of Elections will be proud of you. And same with Governor, I mean, not Governor. Oh, also, I forgot, the Governor has a letter as well and the Attorney General, DeWine, will be proud of you doing your due diligence tonight. So you just cannot do whatever you want to do. The Board of Elections petitions are unified. They all says the same identical thing. When you put stuff in there that's, you miss stuff and then put whatever you want in there, it is deceptive. And that is what has happened here. You, you, you lie to the people, telling them one thing and there are five, I mean, four subject matters in this petition and I pointed that out as well. You don't know what you assigned. You don't know exactly, you don't know nothing you assigned. Because you don't know whether you're signing for annexation or signing for.
And I'll make it very clear. I, because Council President asked about Julian Bond, I just got this information hot off the email that he has asked to be cremated and his family will be gathering on Saturday. And he's, he's asked for his body to be cremated and his ashes to be committed to the Gulf of Mexico. And so his family has asked that people across the country meet at the same time, which is Saturday, August 22nd, 2015, 2:00 PM Central Daylight Time, so that's Central Daylight Time, not Eastern. To spray flowers, to gather near a body of water near our homes and spray a flower petals on the water and join a farewell, bidding a farewell to Mr. Bond. So I am sure that the Cleveland Bridge and ACP will be doing that very activity and if you are interested in joining us, please give our office a call, 231-6260. And then as a resident of the city of East Cleveland, I would like to also thank the council for, for the work that they're doing. But I will say that we're all committed to making the city, we want the city to be a better place. The council has a role, the mayor has a role, but also the residents have a role to make this place the place that we want to live. And so as a resident, we can't always just look to the council or look to an elected official to, to do everything. We need to also gather and do what we can as residents to make sure that they don't take our city. And so you've done your part, but we also need to do our part.
Okay. Thank you. I'm proud of you. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to, as my clerk is reminding me, respond to the council and the mayor through the remarks of the public. And I'm going to give the mayor his opportunity to respond to your concerns and which include his day-to-day operation to fulfill and give some insight on what takes place with the mayor for the day-to-day operation of the citizens and residents up in Cleveland. You have the floor.
First, council members, I would encourage all of you to read the charter. The charter spells out some specific things. It doesn't talk about everything, but it spells out some specific things relative to this council and its relationship with Mayor. I had the pleasure of speaking with two council members and we had in front of us a copy of the charter and it, I pointed out to them Section 113 and I thought they would agree that the charter says and has says, has said for years that the mayor has a right to speak in council on any matter that is before council. But for the last couple of times, there's been some interference with that. So I just want to make sure that the council president is aware that it's in the charter that Mayor has a right to speak before council on any matter before council. And tonight, it was again denied. So that's just one of the little things that we want to point out. And we're all tasked with following certain things, so I just appreciate that. I think the residents would appreciate that too. Secondly, this business of petitions, council certainly has its ability to do whatever it wants to. Whether, you know, the council could, if it wants to, say that the mayor, they could pass legislation saying that the mayor must wear black and white checkered sneakers every council and that, they could pass that. The question of whether it actually has to happen that way is a different. The petition that was presented, there did all sorts of comments about it. There've been comments about the circulators and comments about the leaders of the effort and things like that. In a democracy, there are certain agreed-upon ways that the people express their will. And that will is to just consider something and that is to consider being annexed by another city. The 1,600 signers of this petition have expressed their will to at least consider that. The democratic process in Ohio is that such a petition, once submitted to the council, the council is required to do certain things. And all petitions, all petitions, all signatures are vetted through the Board of Elections, which falls under the auspices of the Secretary of State. All petitions. So this petition is no different. The Board of Elections certified not only the signatures on the petition, counted each and every one of them, said which ones counted, said which ones didn't. It looked at the form of the petition, the, the way that it was structured, these were that. It looked at the circulators, each and every one of them, and checked their signatures. It made sure that there was a committee of five individuals. All of those things complied and when the Board of Elections gave that petition back, said it had passed muster. So council in the face of those things decides to take these actions and that's fine. So it'll be what it is. But at the end of the day, the people who elected all of us are many of the people who signed that petition. The people who elected all of us are the people who want to see us at least look into another option. Council is free to do what it wants to, but ultimately, council is delaying, at minimum, delaying and perhaps even attempting to deny the mere fact that people want to look into something. And I think there was Mark McPhee who said justice delayed is justice is not needed. So this council, when you, when you look at East Cleveland residents who signed that petition, many of them are your neighbors and your supporters and people who care. Justice delayed is justice is not. And in many cases, the provision of streets that we can drive on, making sure that there is fire equipment and EMS equipment to put out fires, making sure that we have money for this, that or the other, it's an economy of scale and it's a, it's an erosion of a revenue stream over the past forty-five years that we have to grapple with. And if we're delaying that, we really are delaying justice. I just want to point out that.
Mr. Mayor, I think all of these people had some concerns and you did not respond to those.
And that's where you're going down. You go ahead and, go ahead and do it.
Where you going? What you doing wrong? He don't even like that. I am going, pardon me, pardon me, I am going to say to this, to the residents. There were several people that voiced their concerns about what was happening and did not get a response, okay? And I wanted to make a couple of comments. I think that the mayor was right when he said that the council needs to read the charter, clarify ordinance and everything else that puts laws into place. I think this body has done that. But this body is saying that the mayor is the ultimate person that does the day-to-day operation and so does the charter. The charter is maybe antiquated, but the charter still speaks to what is supposed to take place. If there is a hole in the street, then the mayor is responsible for dealing with the service director and all the service people that need work on the streets. There's a lot of holes and I, and I, I'm gonna answer one of the questions because one of the questions that were asked was all these holes in the streets. There is a controversy going on between the water department and the sewer district. So the sewer district is saying this happened, the water department is saying this happened and the sewer says we can't do anything else, we can dig it up. But then the water department has to come in and take care of that. I have talked with the water department and I've talked to the sewer department and I've talked to Chief Smetly, who is the chief person under the mayor. He says I'll take care and I'll do some temporary work, which is what he was supposed to do. And Ms. Gloria Allen Levert has called me five or six times and there's somebody that goes down there, but they're still arguing and having controversy. And as far as that building there that sits on Terrace? Huron Place? You weren't listening?
No, I just walked in.
I'm talking right now. I'm talking about Huron Place.
Huron Place?
Yes. The people that bought that, you said they can't do anything about it. They walked off and left it. They walked off, they left it, and then you got people that comes in and loop the building.
Yes.
And you send the police over there, and the police says, "I can't do anything because we're asking the people that own that building to file charges." But they won't. Okay, so the city can't do anything, and there is your law department. Am I correct, Ms. Law Director, about that building that you all have got in, hung up in the law?
I'm sorry.
Huron Place, you weren't listening?
No, I just walked in.
I'm talking right now. I'm talking about Huron Place.
Huron Place?
Yes. The people that bought that, you said they can't do anything about it, they walked off and left it. The law department is saying, so wait a minute, wait a minute. Questions were asked, and I'm giving an answer. The answer to the streets, there's patchwork have been done, but it has been less inferior, inferior, uh, patch, cold patch that has been used. So if you notice, if they fill the hole, three weeks or four weeks later, that cold patch is out. All right? So, I can't say what they're doing or what they're not be doing, but this council is residents' mouthpiece. If you tell us something, we pick it up and we take it to the mayor. And we say, "Mr. Mayor, this is your job, what are you gonna do about it?" I told Mr. Mayor one time, and I'm gonna be very, very honest with you, because I don't have to lie, I don't have to misrepresent the truth, for less than $300 a month. Okay? My thing is, I asked him about something in my war and told him that this needed to be taken care of. And he said, "Councilwoman?" Forty thousand dollars they gonna give. So that meant that he didn't make enough money to do what I asked. And I have not walked through that so-called open door again. So anything that I do, I fight for my residents, I let my residents know what's the truth and how it's being done. And if Ms. Gloria Allen Levert would tell you, she calls me sometime at 10, 11 o'clock at night and told me somebody shot, five shots, "Council President, did you hear it?" I'm gonna tell you live, I said, "Hell no, I ain't heard nothing, I was sleeping." But she did get through to the councilwoman.
And the police.
And the police. They're over on Penn Road. I got, uh, dogs running loose over there at the end of Penn Road and Terrace. I just got to talking to Ms. Hunt, Ms. Parker, all those people over there, and, uh, they've been, people have been, and she been calling the mayor and whatever. What we can do, ladies and gentlemen, as legislators, we can legislate, put laws into place, but they have to be monitored and upheld. And who does that?
The mayor.
The mayor. Now, I'm not blaming things on the mayor, I take my responsibility also. But when you got 52 streets that you have to deal with, then you got a lot of people, you got a lot of streets that you have to deal with. So I'm sorry to be, to take it.
If I may?
Yes.
Madam President, what happened was, there's an underground water leak.
I understand.
That, uh, just decimates, every time it's patched up.
Yes.
It undermines the patching. And in terms of, we, we looked into cutting off the water at that point, but it also feeds two other buildings adjacent to it. So it, you take an astronomical amount of money to repair.
Tell me a little.
And if we just cut it off like we had researched initially, then the other two buildings was getting torn. So right now, it's kind of got an impasse until fund, funding can be done.
Well, I'm just, I'm just making sure there's no blame here. There's no blame to be put on everybody. Everybody got, like Ms. Anderson said, everybody got a part to play. There's three branches of government. There's the administration, there's the courts, and there is the legislative branch. And if all of us do our job, then we will come out all right. But I'm not saying that the money gonna flow just because we do our job. We got to find money, we got to find resources, we got to do a lot of things. And you gotta have vision to do that. You can't sit here and wait for somebody to give you something, you gotta go out and get it. If you can't, if you don't know how to go out and get it, grants ain't gonna get it because you don't have a grant writer. So let's all say what we gotta say and stop beating around the bush and get it done. And Mr. Mattel Baker wants to deal with it because he got a meeting.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, there was a few things, and, and I want the public to be mindful, and, and I'll say this anywhere, when an individual does not necessarily report to you, that is just their way of how they operate throughout their day-to-day, you know, business and, and, and or protocols. The law director, the finance director, any other director for the city does not report to us. And the last time I checked, who pays you is who, who, uh, you know, demands on what, what you produce. You know, whoever pays you is who, whoever you report to directly is who, what demands your, your, your actions. And so, you know, I know she doesn't report to us, so, you know, necessarily we won't get to, get the fairness of the representation, because in, in this case of the annexation, she is not supposed to be advising the mayor because he is one of the circulators on, on the petition. And, you know, every time I, you know, turn around, he's, you know, stating some type of, you know, almost legal precedent, and I would hope that she's not advising the mayor on anything, uh, reference to this. But, you know, it's funny that, that, and I'm not picking on you, uh, but it's funny that I don't see, you know, other than Richmond Heights and this one other city that has some, some problems with, with the law department. I, I, we, we just can't get it together with some of our departments. And, and, and that has been the demise from building and housing to, to finance department to when we had the water department, it has always been some, some challenges with this city. And, and, and I will stand firm on the statement that with bad leadership, you have bad representation. And I'm not blaming anybody, because, you know, it's been a whole dynamic here with city government. For all, on all levels, even the abstract, you know, government represented is, you know, there's been some issues of fairness. And it does not take much to do the right thing, and please hear me, you know, very clearly, it does not take much to do the right thing and say the right thing. And, and, and represent a group of people who have already been disenfranchised, have already been slapped over the head with taxes and everything else. You know, when, when will an urban community come together and everybody just be on one page? That's too much like right. And then you wonder why you have people that do have the skill set to bring about change in a community. You wonder why they go to other states. You wonder why they move out of this, this city, because we, and I'm, I'm speaking in general. And understand me when I say this, God is not gonna bless this city until we start, you know, getting rid of some of our baggage.
Absolutely.
And, and I, I'll stand on that. And, you know, he stated something about justice delayed is justice denied. Well, I'll say something about Malcolm X, by any means necessary, that I'm gonna do what I have to do while I'm here. That's how that goes. And, you know, it, it's not a, it's, it's not a, a disinvestment to you guys, because I can sit exactly where you are and be most effective. I just want you to understand that, that if you sit on this council, be about the business of this community. It's not glitz and glamour, it's not, it's not about who has the title, it's about the effectiveness of the job you do. If you don't know what happens at night in your city, you're not, I'm gonna be honest, you're not effective. I can tell you everything that happens throughout the city at any given point, point of the day. I may pop up on a policing, I may pop up on a fire scene, I may be walking and riding down your street, it does not have to be war for, I burn all of my gas riding around. And I do that because I love the city. This is not a grandstand, but I want you, I want the, the, these group of people in here to understand that it's not the title that makes me do what I do in this community. It's the commitment upon the person who raised me that lays in the ground at Cleveland Memorial Gardens that raised me right to do what I do and think the way I think.
Thank you. Mr. Mattel, Councilman Mattel Baker, you made these good.